Call the meeting to order, please rise and pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Carey, good to see you again. Welcome to the August 21st, 2018 Pulse Falls City Council Meeting. I would say clerk will note, but our clerk decided to do her best impersonation of Evel Knievel, and it didn't work so well, so we would like to thank Deborah Raymer for sitting in for Shannon, and if Shannon's watching, even if she's not, we hope she gets better real quick. But Deborah will note that all council members are present. Tonight, under ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations, we do have a Road Scholar presentation, and is somebody here to present that? There we go. Could you please come forward and introduce yourself? And this is for Stephen Reichert, correct? Floor's yours.
Thank you. My name is Leila Kral. I'm the deputy administrator of the Local Highway Technical Assistance Council, or LTAC. Part of my responsibilities there is to manage our T-2 Center, and that center provides training and technical assistance for all local highway jurisdictions across the state, so cities and counties with road and bridge responsibilities, as well as all the highway districts, 288 entities across the state of Idaho. The Training Center is what I'm here to talk about specifically today with Stefan. We provide training about 10 months a year now, classes across the state, lots of different cities and towns host the classes, even highway districts, and we have a variety of topics that we cover. We have safety courses, professional development courses, and the largest category, of course, being maintenance and construction techniques for road employees. The classes are four to eight hours, in-class portions, some of the classes have outside field exercises that we do, but really, the goal is to train the employees so that they can come back here and make a difference with the city. There's two levels of recognition that we offer currently in the program, the first of which being the Road Scholar. To get to this level, the employee completes approximately 80 hours of instruction, there's some variance there depending on what electives they take, but over a four-year period, many of the courses have an exam that require an 80 percent to pass, so again, we don't want bodies in seats, just like you don't want your employees away for the day doing training. When the employee reaches this level, our council finds it very important to come recognize them in front of their body, their council or commission, that allows them to do this training and supports the training effort, and for their hard work that they've put in to get to this point. So with that, if Stefan wants to come down, I'll present him with a certificate, I'll swat it over, a hat that says LTAC T-2 Road Scholar, and a leatherman that's inscribed with LTAC T-2 Road Scholar. We do have a second level after this, the Road Master. I have definitely been here before to present some Road Masters for the city. Many of the courses build on the information that they've learned in the first round, more exams, some more maths, more technical topics within those classes, but again, another level of training within the program. And now, we have a new leadership development program, the first class will be offered this fall, for any up-and-coming leaders in the road departments, even clerks who've been requesting this for a while, so we will have that new program starting.
Well, thank you for taking the time to come tonight, Mr. Reichert. Thank you very much for your time, dedication, and contribution to the city. Our roads are constantly being repaired and kept up to date, and it's people like you that make it work, so thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all, I really do.
Thank you.
And I'll be getting his picture, that'll be in our newsletter that's sent out to all of our jurisdictions, as well as our subscribers, with his certificate and recognizing him as a City of Pulse Falls employee.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you for the time today.
And I do have a couple announcements. The last day for lifeguards at Kamelum Park was Sunday, August 19th. The beach remains open without lifeguards. Please be careful and swim at your own risk. City Hall and city business offices will be closed Monday, September 3rd, in observance of Labor Day. And school will be starting after Labor Day, so please take extra precaution in driving in school zones, watch for kids and school buses. As we all know, those little ones don't always watch out for cars, and it's important that we watch out for them. One proclamation tonight, the National Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve Week 2018. Whereas since the founding of our great nation, citizens have stepped away from their lives and livelihoods to serve and protect their fellow Americans. This selfless service is greatly evident in the more than 1 million Americans who serve in the National Guard and Reserve, which comprise nearly half of our great United States military force. And whereas our national defense strategy depends on ready guardsmen and reservists who can answer the call to duty, employers who support the services of their employees in the National Guard and Reserve are absolutely critical to the continued success of the all-volunteer force as they allow guardsmen and reservists to focus on necessary training, mobilize to deal with natural disasters, and deploy to engage our enemies abroad. And whereas each year during National Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve Week, we recognize the outstanding commitment of its employers who support those citizens, soldiers, sailors, airmen, marines, and guardsmen. Whereas, I acknowledge and thank the employers, business owners, community leaders, and citizens of Pulse Falls, who join with me in supporting the critical service of the men and women of the National Guard and the Reserve, as we recognize the sacrifices they make to defend our liberties. Now therefore, I, Ronald G. Jacobson, Mayor of the City of Pulse Falls, do hereby proclaim August 19th through August 25th, 2018, as Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve Week. And is Cassandra in the audience tonight? We have a proclamation for you, and Deborah will have it for you. Thank you very much. Before I start on the rest of the information, there are two public hearings tonight, and if anybody wishes to testify, there are forms on the DAs. You could fill them out and turn them into Deborah, and we will give you the time to testify. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
We have none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict? Would you please present the consent calendar.
Item A is minutes from the August 7th, 2018 City Council Meeting. Item B is payables, July 31st through August 13th, 2018. Item C is construction improvement agreement for Greens Ferry Grove First Edition. Item D is reasoned decision for 16th Avenue Annexation. Item E is reasoned decision for plumber forest zone change. Item F is contract with Interstate Concrete for Asphalt Paving at the Meadows Perks Basketball Court. Item G is contract with Interstate Concrete for Asphalt Paving at the Tullamar Park Sports Courts. Item H is grant of right-of-way for the Green Meadows Annexation, and Item I is impact fee update report contract with Tishler Bice.
Any questions on the consent calendar? Not entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion second, further discussion? Deborah, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up is the first public hearing, and the first one up tonight is fiscal year 2019 fee increases. Mr. Jason, and I will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the second of the public hearings for the fee resolutions, so I'm just going to go through these for you. Okay. Well, we'll notice in the fiscal year 19, rates for water, there'll be a 3 percent increase, wastewater with 7 percent, cap fees will be 10.62 percent of a decrease, the wastewater, I'm sorry, the water cap fees will be an increase of 8.3 percent. Impact fees are going to be a 2.8 percent increase based on an E and R that we use from April to April based on construction. Sanitation will have a 0 percent increase. I'll talk about the reasons for these later, and then on recreation, there's going to be various adjustments. If we look at the water and wastewater rates, we have done studies for the water and wastewater based on capital needs and operations, so based on the study, the various studies for either, they recommended a 3 percent increase, and also for the wastewater, a 7 percent increase. Now, when we look at the reclaimed water cap fees, there's going to be a decrease of 10.62 percent. We all know that the prior calculation was challenged, and so we're using the updated calculations, and so we update, the FCS group turned those spreadsheets over, and we recalculated those in-house, and so for this upcoming year will be a 10.62 percent decrease. At the last public hearing, we had a question of whether these increases will be sent on to Rathrum, so since Rathrum, Post Falls treats their wastewater, and the answer is yes, Rathrum has been notified of the increases, and they will pay the increases on the study as well. Let's see, sanitation, Post Falls sanitation, we have a contract with their contract, we followed the various indexes, and they will receive a 4 percent increase based on that. However, the Post Falls residents will not, because of the current situation with sanitation fund, has some cash that will allow not to have a rate increase, and so we'll pass that savings on to the customer. And so, basically, what does this look like with your Post Falls residents? So if you look at the sanitation, water connection, waste, and the water use based on 5,000 gallons wastewater, if you look at the comparison between what the total was for fiscal year 18, the total will be $77.13, with the new proposed rates for fiscal year 19, we're looking at the total will be $81.14, a variance of an increase of just over $4 for the four monthly bill. And that's all I had. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions, Jason?
Okay.
Thank you very much. You don't wish to testify on the fees? In opposition, wishing to speak, Bob Flowers.
Bob Flowers, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I just have a quick question on this. I ask this question every year, and I still do not understand it, and that's this 3 percent water rate increase. Do we need it? I just keep getting told that there was some kind of memorandum or some kind of understanding several years ago that says that we have to increase it 3 percent every single year. Well, what I'd like to see is some numbers to tell me that it needs to be increased. In other words, why does it need to be increased? Some kind of, some set of numbers that tells me that we, the cost of getting our water out of the ground has increased to where we need to increase it. Because just to say that we need 3 percent because of some understanding several years ago doesn't make a lot of sense to me, and I'm sorry, I'm a little slow sometimes on the uptake, but I just have never seen these numbers, and I really would like to understand why we need to do this every single year without questioning it, just because somebody said we needed to.
We'll see if we can make the information available, but as we tell you each time you ask a question, there was a master plan study done which predicted, projected what the cost would be as we move forward, and that's where those numbers come from. It's not a memorandum of understanding, it's not a memo, but do we have that information that Kevin made available?
Yeah, Jason, do you want to sit here, Jason, and respond?
How long ago, Mr. Mayor, was this member, or this?
Master plan study?
We have a water plan that I can share that with you, but if we just look at what the costs are, like the, say like 3 percent's the annual water increases, the employees get a 4 percent increase based on 2 percent COLA, 2 percent merit, utility rates increase each year, so we do look at having, and also, the 3 percent for the, what the customer pays is to have some money set aside in case a water main breaks, they can do the repairs for that. So they have capital replacement needs in that study as well, to have cash reserves on top of operations, so I can get that study, and we can go over that if you're interested.
All right, thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
Jason, just for the record, how often are those studies done?
That I don't know. I think it might be five years.
That's my recollection, too, so every five years is basically recalculated what the increase needs to be, correct?
Right.
No one else wishing to testify? With that, I will close the public hearing, and tonight, do we need a, after a council discussion, do we just need a direct staff to bring back the ordinance for next year?
It looks like the resolution is on the agenda for tonight.
Resolution is on, okay. Council, any comments, deliberation, input? See none? Okay, thank you, thank you, Jason. Next up, public hearing on the fiscal 2019 budget, without a open public hearing.
Mayor and Council, this is the first budget hearing for the actual fiscal year 19 budget. We have went over the detail and information at the budget workshops, so I'm going to hit this at a little higher level, instead of getting down to the weeds, but in the, your council packet was the detail for a 3 percent property tax increase. I did include in there, there's my PowerPoint presentation that we talked about at the council workshops, for what, if the 3 percent was taken, what additional items would be funded through that 3 percent property tax increase? What I'm going to present tonight is a 0 percent increase for property taxes, so the direction I'm looking for for council is, do you want to go with 0, 1, 2, or 3? That's the information I'm looking for. Okay. So with the general fund budget, if we look at from last year, fiscal year 18 to fiscal year 19, budget increased a little bit from, just a little bit over 1.3 million. And there's funds, for dedicated funds, which are the personnel and impact fees, I'm sorry, annexation fees, from 18, that's 3.6, and for the proposed budget for fiscal year 19 is 4.9. So the general fund, for reporting purposes, the general fund expenditures are, in the budget for 18 is 24 million, and the proposed for 19, fiscal year 19, is 26.8 million. And then I categorize these by the different fund types, so special revenue is the 911, the drug seizure, so the expenses for those funds for fiscal year 18 is 1.2 million, and they decrease slightly for fiscal year 19, just slightly over a million. Capital projects funds, we have budgeted for 3.9 for fiscal year 18, anticipated, proposed for fiscal year 19 is 6.2. The reason for those big increases is mostly for impact fees. We had to collect the impact fees, if you look at the monthly cash investment report that's provided in the council packets, we have to accumulate the cash before we do the projects, so now we have the cash, so now we can do the projects, so those will be anticipated to be spent in fiscal year 19. Debt service, which is LIDs, those are holding strong at 203,000. And then, we get to the enterprise funds, which are water, wastewater, sanitation. For fiscal year 18, it was 23 million, 23.5 million, and proposed for fiscal year 19 is 32.6 million. The budget increased from 13 million, total expenditures of 53 million, to 66.9 million from, when compared to fiscal year 18. And of course, for expenditures, the revenue equals the expenditures which have to present to council balance budget. So I wanted to go back to general fund, which is our, which is funded by property tax, liquor, sales tax. I wanted to go through what the increases were for proposed for fiscal year 19. In fiscal year 19, the budget was going to fund two domestic violence advocates for 109,000, a emergency communication officer for 47,000. We're proposing to hire a public, a community development director for 150,000, a GIS technician for 70,000, parks planner for 68,000, and their equipment replacement schedule for 134,800. Let's see, we have a park maintenance worker, which would be seasonal for 14,000, a ticketing system down at Kamelum Park for 55,000, and we're moving on to capital improvements. For the police facility maintenance costs, the anticipated cost for fiscal year 19 is going to be 109,000, and also, we have a replacement schedule for the city vehicles, and we will have 180,000 put aside for those. In this year in streets, this is going to be the first year we're going to use loaders and plows and snowgates, so the streets has requested 135,000 for fiscal year 19. Like I said, in the council packet was for the full 3 percent, if you took the property tax for 3 percent. What I'm presenting tonight is just, is a 0 increase for property taxes.
Any questions, Jason?
I have a question. On that last slide there, the proposed expenditures recap, are those things in the budget right now?
That, it's in, it's in your worksheets, but this is what the departments have requested in addition of what they currently have in the, like, for example, the police department has their personnel. What they've requested is two ECOs and an additional, I'm sorry, two additional domestic violence advocates and an ECO. That's in addition to what they currently have. These are all in addition to what is currently in the budget.
They're in that budget total, it's a balanced budget.
Yes.
But those are in the budget?
Correct.
And so this is the 0, so those are included already, those aren't add-ons?
Correct.
If there is a increase?
Correct. Now, if you look at the, I did this on purpose to have that PowerPoint shaded in black, where if you, if you, the black PowerPoint, where if you take the 3 percent, those would be the items that will be funded by using the 3 percent property tax, and that included in there is an additional patrol officer.
But that's not that slide that you were just showing?
Correct.
The snowgates, I wanted to make sure the snowgates.
See, questions, Jason?
And the oasis are funded?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, yes. Yes, sir.
Jason, tell me again, what happens if at the end of a fiscal year, we have a surplus?
Okay.
We've taken in more money than we've actually spent.
I'm going to use the general fund, for example, because that's, each fund has like its own little checking, check system, but for general fund, what we do is, we have a policy that's established by, that we've established in-house, we've taken the GFOA recommendation of having three months of operating reserve set aside. So we take, what my, I have some restricted balances, which for debt service, capital projects, so I take those restricted funds out, take out the amount that we have for our reserve, and then there's a fund balance left. That fund balance is what we use to carry over in the next budget cycle. So let's say the police department doesn't spend all their money. We take the unspent portion and re-budget it into fiscal, the next fiscal year.
So all that extra cash just goes back into the budget?
It goes back into the next year's upcoming budget.
As revenue.
For example, like, in Seringa, they're not going to finish the splash pads this year, so that money will be carried over for next budget cycle.
Do they then have to ask again for that, or is it already kind of built in that?
It's built in.
Okay.
If there are excess funds?
Yeah.
And if what some people have called a wish list, or an unfunded?
Needs list.
Needs list.
Right.
If those funds are going to be expended, does that come back to council?
Yes, if it's something that we haven't been able to project, or we don't know.
So we will see that if it comes out.
Does that come back as a budget amendment?
Yeah, it will.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
Anyone wish to testify, Deborah?
I have one, again.
In opposition wishing to testify, Mr. Rubin.
Good evening, Barry Rubin. My objection was based on the 3 percent increase that I saw in the packet, not a 0 percent. However, I would like to take this opportunity to get a clarification on a question which I think is very germane to the whole taxation budget process, and that is to get a definitive answer to this question. Does a residence pay in its taxes for the city services that it uses? There's been confusion about this question. Is it neutral? Is it positive? Is it negative? And I'd like to hear a definitive answer for that on the record, because I think that's an underpinning to the whole budget function we go through, the city goes through every year. Some of you may remember that two or three months ago, I came up here and spoke to the council about looking at a mechanism to moderate the growth of the city and residences until we see what the impact of that growth is in a myriad of areas, one of which is taxation, in order to preclude the possibility of waking up one day in a very unpleasant position calling for very unpleasant remedies. The 3 percent that I saw in this package would be an unpleasant remedy. I can tell you from my own personal experience that my retirement doesn't go up 3 percent. It went up 2.1 percent last year, 0 percent the year before, and 0 percent the year before that, and even at that, even though it's military health care, I still got zapped for it. But I think the question of the growth feeds into this, and as I alluded to at that prior statement, I'm not talking about good, bad, or indifferent characterization of growth. What does a residence do to the tax base? Commercial is good. Is a residence good, bad, or neutral? If we need to increase taxes to pay for the increased population, I think we need to look at that mechanism for moderating that growth. That's really on my mind, and I know when I talked to one of the counselors, there was a difference of opinion as to what residences did as far as their impact on the tax base. I always thought it was, at the very minimum, neutral, and in most cases, a negative impact on the tax base, with commercial having a positive impact. So that's what I'd like to see be defined once and for all, and preclude myself making incorrect statements, or other people making incorrect statements. As far as a 0 percent increase in the budget, fine. 3 percent? I'd like to know why a 3 percent would be needed if it's a function of population growth, and therefore, we get into the if-then loop about growth. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rubin. I don't assume there's any rebuttal of that at this point? We can address the question. I will close the public hearing, and I'm going to do something that I haven't done for, that I recall, but I'm going to start the comment tonight after a public hearing. You know, we hear a lot about the tax increases, and obviously, as you know, when we publish the first tax information in the newspaper, we publish a high watermark. We go with the 3 percent, because it can't go any higher than that, but can always go lower. Staff has done a good job in preparing a balanced budget at a 0 percent increase. What I like about that is staff meets, department heads, administration meet, and they talk about what's necessary, what's needed, and they work out what the actual budget should be. So I think that's a pretty good starting point to bring the budget forward. I remember a year ago, two years ago, one of the neighboring cities said we, staff brought forward a balanced budget, it was a great, great accomplishment. I think our staff's done that for about 10 years. So staff does a very good job in taking a look at the budget. Just for information, nine out of the last 10 years, City of Pulse Falls has taken 0 percent tax increase. The one year we took a tax increase, there's not one person up here that wanted to, and that was because of the situation with the streetlights. We were threatened with a lawsuit saying it was an illegal fee, and it should be on the tax rolls, and we did our in-house counsel, and I think we consulted two outside firms, all concurred we needed to change it, so we took 3 percent, plus 3 percent foregone to address that. Take that out of the picture, 10 years in a row, the city council has taken a 0 percent tax increase. Understand, that doesn't mean your taxes go down. We are only one of several taxing districts that have an impact on the citizens of Pulse Falls and what they pay. School district, North Idaho College, Cootney County Fire and Rescue, the library district, the highway district, all these people are taxing. the highway district, all these people are taxing entities, and I, if I'm not mistaken, most, if not all of them, have a budget this year that calls for an increase. Once again, the City of Pulse Falls is, uh, is at this point, and my recommendation will be a zero percent tax increase. And if we do that, that would be, again, nine out of ten years that we've done that. But it's interesting, because Mr. Rubin talks about growth, and I understand your question. One of the reasons we've been able to get by without a tax increase is because of what the new construction has contributed and annexation fees have contributed to, uh, the city's tax revenue. Interesting to note, for two thousand nineteen, two thousand fiscal, uh, year eighteen, nineteen, we're projecting new construction to contribute four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in revenue. Compare that to two thousand seven, twelve years ago. It contributed eight hundred and two thousand, four hundred thousand dollars more. Reason for that is a lot of the development, a lot of the construction that's taking place right now, we're in urban renewal districts. You know, you, you pay now, but it's gonna come back as our districts start closing out. I also calculated, you know, what, what would happen if we took, or I didn't, I'm not taking credit, I asked Shelley to calculate, what a one percent tax increase would, would generate for the city, and it was a hundred and five thousand dollars. What would that do for the owner of a three hundred thousand dollar home? Eight dollars and ninety-eight cents a year. Okay? So I think at times, it's not the amount, it's the idea. And, once again, I think council has done a, a very good job in making sure that we maintain the level of service that our customers, our, our citizens require, and, uh, you know, I take my hat off to them, they're, they're making do, and, yeah, costs go up, personnel costs go up, uh, insurance costs go up. So we're not seeing any of our costs go down necessarily, and yet we've been able to do it through the new growth and annexation fees. Now, the other issue is, that's not always gonna be there. So if we, if we go with a zero percent this year, you know, we can expect that that's going to continue, because we're going to see a year where the, maybe growth slows down, and we don't have that outside, or that additional revenue coming in, and we probably will be looking at a tax increase. But my recommendation to council tonight, and it will be up to you to decide, is that we go with a zero percent tax increase. I think the budget's been vetted by department heads and administration, and I think that would be the prudent thing to do. But with that, I will yield the floor to whomever would like to comment.
I'd like to comment.
No, please don't. This isn't a gymnasium.
I'll comment. I do want to speak to Mr. Rubin's comment, because he didn't, he and I did have a conversation about what is that definitive number of, what does it cost for residents versus a commercial versus industrial, whatever? Quite frankly, what I came up with is, there is no definitive number. It depends on the year, it depends on the tax base, it depends on the type of homes, the type of, it's, it changes constantly. So it's constantly moving target. So there is no definitive number that says a residence will hit the tax base this month, this much this month, or this much this year. There's nothing that says that a commercial business is gonna contribute this much this year. It changes, it's a constantly moving thing. But to the mayor's point, what the City of Pulse Falls has done, and the staff has done, ten years in a row, we've been able to keep that all in balance without a tax increase. It's not something that the council's responsible for, it's not something that individual taxpayers are responsible for, it's the staff in the city that sit down every year to look at the numbers and say, what can we push, what can we give, what can we, but we want to keep the level of service at this level without causing too much grief on the taxpayers. Ten years in a row, I gotta tell you, I feel pretty good about that. So, here we are, we've got this constantly moving number of residents, how much has the city grown in the last ten years? A lot. And we still don't have to take a tax increase. I think that's my answer to you, Barry, is that over that ten-year period, with all those moving targets, with the increase in population, we have not had to take a tax increase. So I think we've got it in balance. That's my answer.
Yes? Can you comment?
Oh, hey, comment. Well, I'd again like to thank the staff for coming back with a zero percent balanced budget. Also recognize that over time, it's, you know, operating on the same, um, you know, head tax, I guess, is not sustainable. As everybody's noted already, you know, cost of living goes up, insurance goes up, utilities go up, everything go up. And I know that, you know, the city's been running pretty lean, you know, the police department is gonna have some very real needs here coming up pretty soon, you know, streets and parks, they have some very real needs coming up. But the, the light at the end of the tunnel is, we do have some urban renewal districts closing within the next couple of years. So that's going to be bringing a lot of that revenue that, you know, back into the city that has been laid out for eighteen to twenty years. So, I guess I'm asking the, the staff, thanks for coming back with zero percent, hold tight. The districts are closing, and, uh, and we appreciate not having to pass any additional burden on to the taxpayers, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else?
I just agree with the gentleman, and I thank you guys very much for all your hard work, and I know that every year, we go through this process with the workshops, and all the departments work really hard to, um, to make sure that we give the citizens the best that we can for the least amount of money that we need to spend, and I just appreciate all of you, so, thank you very much.
I'd also like to thank the staff for coming in with the, with their budget, balanced budget. I do share some of the same concerns that Joe does, that sometime down the line, we're, we're taking zero, you know, maybe sometimes we'd look back and been prudent to take one percent here, maybe a two percent, because you can get behind the eight ball a little bit down in the future, but I think at some point, we'll probably have to look at, at doing that.
I won't belabor the point on how awesome the staff is, and how challenging we make it for them every budget cycle, to go back in, um, and really look, we're all taxpayers up here, too. And so, everything, every decision that we make affects us as well, and I appreciate, uh, the staff for doing that. We've not had to take a tax increase the entire time, I think I've been on the council for ten years. But I think it's an important distinction, we've not had to, we've also chosen not to. So, kudos to the people up here, and the people that I've served with in the, in the last ten years, and all of you, and to those people who come and step up to that podium, or, um, are present during these discussions, and not just criticizing decisions after, but participate. So I think it's just a win-win. I really love Pulse Falls, and, and I'm really proud. I think during the toughest times is when you really see the measure of a community, the measure of city government, and the measure of elected officials, um, in whatever capacity. So, yeah, I, I think it's a win-win all the way around, and I am also, I know we're not voting tonight, but, uh, I'm not in favor of taking any increase, and that budget looks good to me.
Interesting note, real quick, and then I'll, listen. Uh, we had several, I think a couple different requests from the media for what we were going to do, and I don't see them represented, so I'm gonna leave it up to you whether or not you want to contact them, or let them contact you. Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank Jason for all his work on the budget this year, and for the department heads, and their supervisors and staff that assisted them with putting together the budget.
So we'll bring this, thank you. So we'll bring this back in two weeks, is that correct?
Correct.
For the second public hearing?
Yes.
And then at that point, we'll take action?
Yes.
Anybody, any difference in opinion, or is that fine with everyone?
Sounds good.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Jason. Next item up is unfinished business. Uh, tonight we have none, followed by citizens' issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council on a city-related item that is not on the agenda. Anyone wishes to testify, come on up. Please, sir, name for the record.
My name's Larry Guy, I live at one-ten West Grange Avenue, and a week or so ago, I sent the council a letter about the swales on Arnold Estate, and I was just wondering if there was any progress on it. Are we gonna get anything done this year, or is it another year of nothing?
And I visit with Mr. Guy, where, where are we on that, have you? Thank you, by the way, for coming for me, Mr. Guy.
So, we're doing some research on that right now. The, the swale in question was supposed to be maintained by an adjoining homeowners association that appears to have gone defunct, so we're in the process of gathering those documents. This is not a quick and easy solution. I've reached out to Mr. Guy, let him know that we're working at it. I'll check back in with him, we're working on setting up a meeting once we can get our hands on the documents, and see where we can go, and what we can do. It is, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, it's difficult, because the entity that's in charge has gone defunct, and so we're working to see what kind of solutions we can find.
So they will keep on it for you, Mr. Guy?
I talked to the residents that live behind me, I'm not in it, but the water supplies my swales that aren't on, but, uh, the code enforcer never did give them their paperwork. I did, I did come down here, and I got the code and everything, and took it to the code enforcer, and he said he'd make copies and, and distribute them to all the people, and as of when I wrote you guys the letter, the residents back there still hadn't got anything done, and that was two or three weeks after I gave it to the code enforcer. That's why I wrote you guys the letter, was 'cause all of my trails that I did, I never got no satisfaction out of anybody, the engineers, or the planning, or anything, and I had the, the master agreement from Rob Paulus that said that the city owns the ground, and that the city could go in and do all this stuff, just like I put in the letter, and bill the people that live in the development, and, but he said he didn't want to do it, so, that's what I'm asking you guys for.
Council will work on that, they'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Guy. Anyone else? Next item up is new business. Tonight, the first item is engineering surface contract with J U B for the outfall and river crossing. Mr. Arbeany?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Andrew Arbeany, City of Pulse Falls, Utilities Project Manager. I am presenting a contract with J U B Engineers for design and CMGC assistance on the outfall and river crossing project. I have a couple slides this evening that'll provide an overview of this project, and some details also on the CMGC process, and a timeline of the project. Before I get started, I wanted to provide a quick background. This project for the outfall upgrade was identified in the two thousand thirteen Facilities Master Plan. In two thousand sixteen, the city acquired property south of the river. It's currently the Pulse Falls Community Forest property, with the intent of future reuse. By two thousand sixteen, we recognized that with that acquiring of that property, we would need to supply reuse water to the property for future opportunities. So it was identified that combining those two projects made the most sense, combining an outfall and river crossing project together. A couple key points, as I mentioned, upgrading the outfall, and we'll install an underwater pipeline crossing, parallel to the existing outfall and the new outfall. As I mentioned, using a construction manager, general contractor structure, that's an alternative delivery method. We identified this method as a way to reduce the, the risk to the city. There's a lot of challenges with this project, going through the river, permitting requirements, there's some steep slopes, a lot of challenging aspects. So, the way to best define CMGC would be to, to explain that in, it assigns risk to the party that can best manage that. The project is located just south of I-90, um, on the top part of the plan, that's the plan view. To the left of that screen is Lundie Boulevard. So, it's a little blurry, but you, what you, what you're looking at is the purple line, there's a purple line, a red line, and a, and a green line. One is the outfall, that'll be the new outfall we are constructing. The, one of the other two lines that extend through the river, one is for the reuse pipeline, and the other will be a blank conduit for future utilities such as a power line, power supply. This provides a, a general description of... This provides a description or an overview of the CMGC process. So as the owner, the City of Pulse Falls, would have a contract with J U B Engineers, and this is for the agreement that's being presented tonight, and we would have a contract with a qualified CMGC that we would determine through an RFP process, and determine the most qualified CMGC. Between the engineer and the CMGC, there are contractual requirements that would occur. This process allows us to collaborate through the design, rather than selecting a design and going out for bid and requiring a project to, a contractor to follow that particular design. It brings them in early on, and allows them to be involved in the design process, starting at thirty percent, and they're committing to a construction method and, uh, involved in that collaboration. Following an approved contract and the execution of the contract, we would start design. That would occur this fall, and then continue to next fall of two thousand nineteen. Couple of the key highlights I, I put up here, just to point out, is that we would select the most qualified CMGC. That process would occur fairly soon. Again, we would bring them on at about thirty percent. The milestones are thirty, sixty, and ninety-five percent review and design, and that includes the city's involvement and collaboration with the engineer and the CMGC. And then as we get a refined construction process and method and design, J U B will be coordinating the permitting process, coordinating all the permits, the appropriate permits that we'll need to, to do work in the river and along the, the encroachments into the river, or near the river. Construction is anticipated to occur in the summer of two thousand twenty. So we have June, we would start around June, work in the, um, upriver, the land upriver, outside of the, the river area, and then in July and August, we would actually start river work. That's the lowest point of the season, where the water level's the lowest, and allows us to, to perform that work. This agreement this evening is for Phase One, it's a design contract. Total is three hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred dollars, and that includes a contingency, about ten percent. The Phase Two will be a CMS contract, so that'll be Construction Management Services, and this is an estimated cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That number will be refined and finalized as we get to the end of Phase One, once we have identified the design, finalized the design, and identified the construction mythology. So total cost, total estimated cost with the CMS, and this contract is five hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars. There's any questions?
Questions, Ben?
Andrew, is there ever a situation where you start off with the contractor with the design part, portion of it, and then switch when it comes to the construction? Or are we permitted, are we committed, both as J U B committed and we committed to each other on this whole project?
So this contract with J U B is for the, the services outlined in the scope through the, through the design. Bringing on a CMGC, we have discussed options and exit ramps, if you will, opportunities where we can disembark. So if we get through the design process, and, with a CMGC, and, and move through that, there, there has been discussion and, and talk of structuring it that way.
Great. Any questions?
Yeah, so Andrew, so Phase Two would be the actual construction documents, and they'd be prepared so you could go out to bid with those documents sent after Phase Two?
Correct. So with the CMGC, the, the construction manager, general contractor, is allowed to bid on their own packages, but their sub-packages that they have, that will go out to formal bid. So portions of the work for excavation, pipe fitting, they can bid, the CMGC can actually bid on those packages, and... bid on those packages, and once all of that is complete and compiled and the final price, a guaranteed maximum price is determined, then yes, we would move forward with construction with a contractor.
Any questions, Andrew? So you need council's approval to proceed with the contract, correct? Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Deborah, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Andrew. Next item under new business is memorandum of understanding with Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency regarding upgrades to Tullamore Lift Station. Mr. Beecham?
Good evening, Mayor and council, John Beecham, utilities manager. I didn't want Andrew to have to present on all the projects tonight, so I'll take one of them. I'm here to present, as the mayor said, on the urban renewal memorandum of understanding regarding upgrades to Tullamore Lift Station, also working on the longest council agenda item title that I can think of. This is a project that's located near Highway 41 and just south of Prairie at Tullamore Lift Station, it's an existing lift station, so shown here, Prairie Avenue crosses here on the map, and Highway 41 comes down. Best way to describe it, it's in Tullamore Lift Station, or in Tullamore Development. Can't remember if it was one or two council meetings ago, but Engineering Department presented the Northeast Quadrant Study as an upgrade to our collections master plan, and this is the first of several projects that were outlined in that master plan for that area of the city. Also included were a flow equalization basin, upgrades to 12th Avenue Lift Station, and Highway 41 pipeline. We'll be bringing some of these proposals back to you in the near future, which is why I included them today. But we are here to talk about Tullamore Lift Station. The changes that were outlined from the master plan to the current recommendations, or from the previous master plan to the current recommendations, are to include flow to the lift station from north of Prairie Avenue, this would be the Tech Park area. Currently, the station is a triplex lift station, which is a fancy way of saying it has three pumps in it. Two of those pumps have been upgraded by city staff to be higher-capacity, more modern pumps. For budget reasons, the third pump has not been upgraded yet. So the needs that were identified in the Northeast Quadrant Study, which is now our master plan, are to add a third pump of equal capacity and to add 4,000 gallons of emergency This project was actually negotiated to be funded through the East Post Falls Urban Renewal District, through funds that they anticipate having within that district. The boundaries of that district are shown here, and I can roughly point out the lift station, which is here in that general area. The agreement itself between the Urban Renewal Agency and the city calls for reimbursement to the city once construction is completed, so we would fund the project out of reserve funds and then be reimbursed by the URA. We would manage the design and construction, basically the same as a normal lift station upgrade for us, and costs would be reimbursed once Greensbury overpass payments are completed, currently anticipated to be in 2020. It didn't include it on here, the cost is estimated to be $108,000, I believe that's in your packet, and that'll be refined, obviously, as we get into design, but that's what was in the master planning document. With that.
John, you're a lot smarter than I am, but with the 4,000 gallon emergency storage, doesn't sound like very much.
It isn't very much, to be honest with you. There's existing emergency storage at that facility, so what the Northeast Quadrant Study really looked at was what additional flows from that area north of Prairie would be coming to this lift station. So it's basically an incremental upsize, it's not adding storage where there wasn't storage before.
Questions, John?
John, is this going to provide us enough capacity if the Tech Park gets built out? Are we going to have to add on to it later?
This provides the capacity that is built into the Northeast Quadrant Study, which was funded by the developers of the Tech Park. That's a complicated way to say, I don't know the answer to that. It really depends on if they develop at the assumptions for what they've put in there as far as flows are generated by that. If those are greater than the assumptions, then you'd obviously need to have something looked at in the future, but this is in line with what their anticipated needs were.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you. Questions, John? With that, we will need a motion to authorize signature on the document, correct?
Yes.
Move to approve the authorization and the signature for a memorandum of understanding between Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency and the City of Post Falls regarding upgrades to the Tullamore Lift Station.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Deborah, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is the one resolution that we have tonight, and that's on the fiscal year 2019 fees.
Move to approve the resolution fiscal 2019 fees.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Deborah, please take your roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item up is administrative staff reports, do we have any this evening?
We don't have any reports, but I'll let council know on the memorandum of understanding. We'll be seeing a similar memorandum of understanding coming forward for the 12th Avenue Lift Station and EQ basin upgrades, likely at the next meeting is what we're trying to target for that particular MOU.
Mayor comments? I don't have any tonight, other than once again to thank staff for the work you did on the budget, and number two, to remind everybody, please drive safe as these little kids start occupying the roads and the sidewalks. House comments?
I have a question, I'm curious what happened with the beyond green question. I know that Councilor Malloy asked for more information before we decide on that.
So we'll be bringing that information back to you probably at the next meeting.
Okay, great. One more question. For the chief, whatever happened to Black Bay Park and our cougar?
Went to Tubbs Hill.
Good job of relocation, Ashley Bear.
So the cougar, exactly, the cougar and the two kittens were there, they believe. We had cameras set up from a gentleman, came across state line that does this over there, collars him, moves him out at about a rate, about 10 per month over in Washington, and he had set his cameras up to monitor what we had down there. Luckily, he never got a single picture. What he believes happened was that they had moved on. He actually was down by the den where they were reported last. They believe that they probably swam the river back towards Signal Point, which happens very, it's very common with mountain lions. So he believes they're probably back at Signal Point, said we do have a fox problem, maybe, but there's some fox down there, but no cougars anymore.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, chief. Do not need an executive session tonight?
We do not.
So the next meeting is? Our next motion is?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.